February 19th, Board of Selectmen. We have John Grotton on the phone and Town Manager Phil Swanson on the phone. First thing on the additions to the agenda, the posted agenda, is the dilapidated building ordinance that didn't make it onto the agenda. And Jill, do you have something to just say about this?
So we're working on a dangerous buildings ordinance. And Vermont League of Citizens and Towns are working on it for us. That's just progress.
It's basically in a study committee right now. And the Woodstock Visionary Project Agreement, we have that, should be in your packets. We approved this expenditure some time ago. This is just the contract.
Do we need to approve that as well?
Yeah, we need to approve it.
I'll propose a motion to approve this.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I'll second it.
And seconded to approve the contract. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by -- excuse me.
I'm sorry, I just have a question of what you're approving a contract for.
Explain it.
Yeah.
It's a contract between the town of Woodstock and the Community Workshop LLC, which is the company who's going to be the facilitators for the visioning project.
Great.
Okay.
Yes, it was.
The finances, the money's been approved. We're now in the contract.
Twenty-five thousand dollars that we approved. Okay. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 John aye, Jill aye.
Jill aye. Mary aye.
Mary aye.
Sonia aye.
And Butch aye. That's been approved. So moving right on to the Economic Development Commission for their report or their business. Looks like you're already prepared and give it a go.
Yes. Okay.
What have you got for us?
So we, you will have seen, I think it's been submitted to you, the MOU for the extension or for the coming this year between the EDC and the Chamber. We have settled, essentially our goal as an EDC was to aim to decrease the costs of the website. Oh, sure.
We've got some people on the phone that came here.
Got it.
This is the EDC, Julia's talking.
So is it helpful for, should I tell you at all about what, how we came to this agreement?
Yes.
Or just, okay.
Give me two reasons.
For the reason why we're asking for ten thousand dollars and what that will do. Essentially, the, it became clear as we were examining how the website worked, the numbers, the possible revenue, that it was not really possible to get the kind of revenue that had been projected when the website was created a year ago. So with that in mind, how did that then change the EDC's relationship with the Chamber, the website functioning? So what we as an EDC came down to was that it's in our best interest as a town to have an awesome website. And while that doesn't mean that we should commit town funds to excessive expenditures for a website, we basically pared it down to what is the bare minimum that we can, we can take it down to and commit to. And the yearly, what we settled on was ten thousand dollars a year. So that's going to take some work to get to, which we're already doing. Our changing management, if I can go into more nitty-gritty if you're interested in it, yeah, we're working on it. It's happening. It's in progress. It's not, it's no longer theoretical, which is great. And so now, that's what, that's what we're doing moving forward. We have, we already asked you for the twenty-five thousand for Katie's contract, or Katie, the content creator.
The content person for the.
Yeah. With the understanding that that content is not only for the website, but it's also for email, for various media platforms. And so this now is just for the website.
So do we need a separate motion to approve the MOU?
Do we need a separate motion to approve that MOU, Phil?
I think so.
Yes.
It would be best so it's clear in a couple months when we look at the minutes.
I would like to add very quickly, we had a special meeting last night to make sure that everyone on the EDC was, that in agreement, not everyone, but that we had voting, everyone voted in favor. We had a hard time finding quorum, getting everyone in the same place between the holiday and everything else. We have spoken with everyone. Everyone is, we have one extension and everyone else is voting yes.
So there's one.
Go ahead, Phil.
They do not have a proper legitimate vote in favor of it because they had four people voting yes and they have to have five people to vote yes.
Can we override it if we vote?
Well, that's the question. And I believe you can.
Right.
Because they did always make recommendations to you and you can say no or you can say yes. They could have recommended, so.
Right.
I think you can.
Okay.
How's your board going to feel about that?
Good.
Okay.
We, the issue was the school hall that we couldn't get everyone in one place. So the feeling of the board is seven vocally in favor.
Right.
One abstention.
Okay.
Though that has not, that vote has not been formally taken.
There were not seven last night who had input.
Correct. Exactly. But we have spoken with them.
To get the set feeling.
Absolutely. They've seen, everyone has been confirmed, you have seen the MOU, everyone has weighed in.
And this is really, I guess this question's for Beth. This really has been hashed back together with the Chamber, right?
We've had several meetings. The last one might have been Martin Luther King's Day.
I think it was. Yeah. Timing is impeccable here.
You guys are on board.
Our board voted to accept.
That's great because it's been a long journey.
It has.
Right. Okay.
So I just assume, make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the EDC and the Chamber for the website.
Motion's been made, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding between the EDC and the Chamber. Any further discussion?
I have one question. This is going to expire in December 2019 and we're already in February. Will we, will you work on it before December next year or will we be two months into the next year when?
I think that the goal is to get ahead of the ball this time around.
Okay.
I think that because the website was delayed in its launching, we didn't quite have the numbers that we didn't have, it didn't launch until what, April, I believe. So getting the content creation, the emails, everything up and running in order to then make the decisions financially in a responsible but also comprehensive way, there were, there was some timing challenges to that, which were, some of them not, you know, we can take some responsibility for, some of them were just the way things shook out. But we have every intention of not coming back multiple times in the future.
And we did begin in October, meeting.
Yeah.
You did.
We did.
Yeah.
So the goal was to be done.
Yes.
And then there were some timing.
Do you think with this as a base going forward, it'll be easier to get that done next year in time?
I think so.
I think so.
Good.
Yeah, we definitely hashed out a lot of, we had a lot of meetings.
I have no more questions. I'm good.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Jill says aye.
John says aye. Jill says aye.
Mary says aye.
Mary says aye.
Sonia says aye.
And Butch says aye. Motion's carried.
Great.
Anything else in the EDC?
The ten thousand.
Oh yes, we need, we need to ask for the ten, we need the approval of the ten thousand dollars.
Do you want to have right now?
Cash, small bills.
I'll just approve this. I think I should make that motion.
I guess so.
And I'll second it to approve the ten thousand dollars.
So the motion's been made and seconded to approve the ten thousand dollar expenditure. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Jill says aye.
Jill says aye. John says aye.
Mary says aye.
Sonia says aye.
And Butch says aye. All right. That's it?
That's.
But now.
Unless you have any other questions on the report that I sent in, that's.
Which is this report.
Do we get to know what Park Run is? Or do we? You might want to wait. It's a great program.
Cool.
You can actually look it up.
Can we take up that?
Good. Or go online. Thank you.
Maybe we should say Sarah.
Thank you for having all these meetings, extra meetings. Meetings about meetings. It's great.
Meetings about meetings.
So on the agenda tonight is the DuBois and King Extension Contract. Do you have anything for us before that we approve that or don't approve it or?
That's what we're talking about to have in April.
April. With the Select Board and the trustees and the public at the same meeting. So we just have to get a date that will work with both boards.
Do we just need to sign the contract first though?
We can just get a contract extension like we did for March. It's just a piece of paper that gets signed.
That contract extension needs to have board approval before I would sign it.
Okay.
But that, that extension's only till March for this month. So we have to have a new one because we planned on having the meeting in March for the 19th.
Are you going to need us to sign something on March 6th? I guess that's the question.
I have to get a new contract extension to get Phil to sign it then.
Can we not amend this by hand and sign it?
Excuse me?
Can we amend the contract by hand? The contract goes to March 31st and we need to extend it to April?
End of April, yes.
So you're asking, Phil, what Ray is saying is that the presentation is not likely to happen until April, so we would need to extend this contract to make an amendment to April.
Pick a date then.
Just pick a date.
They wanted March 31st to complete the work.
No, work will be completed at the end of February.
Work will be completed at the end of February.
So the contract extension just, just for the presentation?
Yeah.
And you want it to be in April because that's when the meeting is going to be, which I guess she's asking if we can't just cross out the date on the original contract, write in the new date and sign it.
Fine with me, I don't do anything.
So who has the original?
I believe Beth would have the original.
Somewhere. So pass, which can do that.
Ray, maybe Ray.
Ray, I don't have the original.
Phil was last one.
Phil signed.
And Phil signed the original.
Did you have the original in the new packet?
I do, somewhere, but the fact, the problem is is that he signed it on.
Before we.
Before we met.
He signed on February 7th.
Right, so I have this con, I have this one right here that is blanked out.
Right.
That I can, you can amend, but.
We can also do it March 6th.
How about if Butch signed it, it doesn't have to be Phil, does it?
Yeah, Butch can sign it.
All right, so what, what's the date?
You change that date to what, April 30th?
April 30th, yes.
And what would be your pleasure for a date? Would it be the 9th of April or the 16th?
At a regular meeting or?
The regular meeting.
The 9th is the trustees and the 16th is the, your meeting.
I'm not here on the 9th.
Neither am I.
April break.
I'm not here on the 16th. Why don't we go for March and have a special meeting?
Because you have town meeting, village meeting, Select Board and trustees meeting.
Butch is leaving town on the 14th of March.
But that's, you know.
Well, do we need to do this now?
I would just suggest that you do not do it during school vacation week.
Right. Because then you won't get people to come.
So I've already put down April 30th. That's, that's okay.
That's just for the contract, exactly.
Yeah, and now we're talking about when you're going to have a presentation.
Because her schedule is also.
Presentation.
Yeah, of course.
Money back, Butch.
I don't know. Whenever you tell me, it's time to move along.
Oh, I see.
We're not putting that one in.
I'm here, but I think your point is correct.
Would the 23rd, April 1?
Can we do this not in this meeting because there's lots of people involved?
Yeah. I just want to get something to Sophie, that's all. And her schedule is as booked as anyone else's.
Yeah, but we can do this by a doodle call somewhere at a time rather than have a meeting with all of us, couldn't we?
Yeah, we can do that. We'll find out. That doesn't violate the open meeting.
Is this going to lock trustees as well?
No, you're allowed to schedule a meeting.
Yeah, you're allowed, you're allowed to communicate to schedule a meeting.
We'll get her availability.
That's great.
Okay.
Okay. Get that, Phil and John, we're waiting to find out what Sophie's availability is and then we'll schedule from then.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, moving right along. The Coalition Against the Bigger Trucks. Phil, renew which?
The URL. We don't need to verbally approve this contract.
No, I just.
I think if each, what they'd like to have is each person who's willing to sign the petition, sign it by email.
Yeah, wait, wait, Phil, they're still on this, something else here. Are we, are we done?
Well, technically Beth just asked because there's actually three parts to that MOU. And I was sort of saying, assuming that one is actually labeled MOU, but I sent it as one packet.
Right, the agreement about the URL ownership. And what's the third part?
Is the.
Is the term sheet.
Oh, the 10,000. So we've approved.
The MOU, the $10,000 and the URL agreement.
Is the Chamber's, right?
So I would make a motion to approve the URL ownership agreement between the Chamber and the EDC for the website.
I'm going to ring.
Because the Chamber owns the URL.
The Chamber owns the URL, but essentially we hashed out together terms that would specify how to come, in the, in the event of a disagreement on what to do.
Who does what, I guess.
What's happening, how do we come to agreement?
Okay.
So this, all the, all that we have is, says copies on it.
Yes.
I have the original.
So I'll propose a motion to accept the URL ownership agreement.
Oh, I propose it. Do you want to second it?
I'll second it.
There you go.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Jill says aye.
John says aye. Mary says aye.
Mary says aye.
Sonia says aye.
Jill says aye, Sonia says aye, and Butch says aye.
Thank you. There we go. I think now we're covered up. We are done until December.
So is that the three parts we came up with?
Yeah. The money and MOU and the URL.
I just wanted to make sure because you had the two or the three parts.
Thank you.
Pass that down to Beth, would you please? Okay, where are we? The Coalition Against the Bigger Trucks. Phil's going to tell us what that, what we need to do with that.
Can we get back to this one?
Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, what they want is for each individual board member, if they're inclined, to sign on to this petition, it's email petition.
I see.
Yep.
And to give a bit more background.
Beth, can you forward to everybody the mail and then I can work it from there?
Yes, I will. I will sign this, send this forward. It's basically you end up replying to the email directly to the woman with your name, your.
That you're on the select, as a select person.
Right, so if you guys agree, I would just send it to Butch and have him as the chair of the Woodstock Select Board sign it as the Select Board for the town of Woodstock is what they, she really wants.
So the only thing I couldn't work out is, is this coming from a state senator? I mean, is this, is this organization?
State directors.
For the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks for state, national?
I think it's a nationwide organization.
Right. And our lobbyists told us about this or how did we?
No, we've worked with them before.
Okay.
For years on different truck things. They know about us, our truck enforcement.
So she's essentially a lobbyist herself. That's a Virginia area code. So she, this is, this is somebody who's lobbying for things that we agree with.
The bottom here is a.
We're, we stand in the same.
Yes.
Yeah, side on this.
So this is up to us as individuals, not, not a vote? Yeah.
Well, if you guys, as Beth says, if, if we want to, if we want to do this, I guess I can sign for the board, but I'm not going to sign for the board unless the board's all in agreement to it.
I don't think it can hurt anything.
I'm certainly in agreement.
I mean, I, basically what they're asking is for Congress to, you know, she wants to lobby Congress not to allow any increase in truck length or weight.
Longer and heavier.
Longer and heavier on our roads, which I think everybody in town probably agrees.
Yes.
So I see no problem with it. Do you want us to vote on it or do you just want to thumbs?
Yeah, I'd like a vote on it so that if I sign it, everybody has agreed to it, so.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and sign this petition to try to encourage Congress not to pass those increases.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to sign this for, as a petition for, as a board. Any further discussion? All those in favor say, signify by saying aye.
Jill says aye.
Jill says aye. Mary says aye.
Sonia says aye.
Butch says aye.
John?
John is.
Yeah. Aye.
Okay. John says aye. All right. Jill, I skipped over that in the old business there. Do you have something you want to say on that? Just that we are, we need changes to the process, procedures for boards and committees? Is there anything going on with that now?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So last month we presented, so Carrie and I, Kari Cola and myself, were asked by the Joint Committee of the Trustees and the Select Board to work on standardizing the processes and processes and procedures we have for the Woodstock Boards, Commissions and Committees. So we put together some words and then at the request of the Select Board last month, we sent it out to the chairs of each of the committees and lots of people responded to us. And so now we've taken all those comments and made this simpler. So we've made the hurdles for prospective new members less onerous, we've made the reappointment of board members more straightforward, we've made the recruitment and the reappointment the responsibility of the Select Board and the trustees rather than any of the individual boards. We've, we've made the procedures necessary and useful to the boards and in doing so recognize that the planning and zoning boards already work under state statutes, which many of the other boards don't. So we're kind of teaching them to suck eggs, but, so they don't need to take notice of all of these things. And we've tried to make the admin job achievable while supporting the volunteer board members. And in the end, what we've managed to do is make everything simple so that the fact that everybody is a volunteer on these boards and on these boards is appreciated and we don't need to make things more complicated. We just need to make it simpler, straightforward and consistent.
I just have one comment and that is the ad that's in the paper right now that says vacancies on boards. I've had several people mention, is there a vacancy on the planning commission? And there, of course, isn't. So when you're having people that are up for renewal, like I am this in March, is that advertised as a vacancy? I think you just need to think about that.
Who put that ad in?
I don't, I don't know.
I believe that was for, that was out of, it was out of the zoning office.
Well, I've never seen it before when it, when you've had, when we haven't had a vacancy, they haven't had it.
So one of the reasons we came up with this is because right now we have about 10 boards and they all do different things. And so we'd like it to be consistent. And so that would be something that hopefully won't happen again, right?
But there's a list of all the boards.
It's coming from the misleading.
Right.
So we need to talk to Lynn and Michael.
Can you do that, Jill?
Yes.
Anything further on that, Jill?
So the next steps for this are to read it, make sure you're all happy with it, and then we'll take it to a joint trustees and Select Board and approve it then. Thank you.
Now we can talk about the DuBois and King Extension Contract.
Oh, right.
Now we can talk about. All right. Been approved, right?
I think we did.
Yes.
We just have to.
Give it to Butch to sign.
Give it to Butch to sign.
Do you think we need, we need a motion to approve the extension to April 30th?
I thought we already did it.
There's no motion.
No motion.
I will make a motion to approve the contract extension with DuBois and King through April 30th, 2019.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve it for an extension through April 30th. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jill says aye.
Oh, Mary.
John says aye.
Good.
John says aye. Jill says aye. Mary said aye.
Yeah.
And Butch says aye.
It's great.
Okay. Okay. So Butch's got to sign this. All right.
Thank you, Beth.
So now we have the.
Wow, we're still having a fight.
Now we have the Bookstocks that want to use this room. I talked to Phil about this today. He said he has no problem with it at all.
Hey, guys. Well, what? Yeah, I might be up tomorrow or Thursday.
Bookstocks.
That's fine.
They want to use this room. They have used it before and they want to use it again. Phil says he has no problem with it.
Great.
Good job, so.
I know they need more venues, so that's great.
So I don't know that we need to make any, I guess we just make a motion to allow him to do it. It'll be done if you, if that's what you agree on.
Does everything need a motion? I'll make a motion to approve he is in the room for Bookstock. This room particularly.
Yes, this room.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to allow Bookstocks to use this room for the dates indicated here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Jill says aye.
Jill says aye.
Mary says aye.
Sonia says aye.
Butch says aye.
John?
Aye.
Says aye. Okay. You got that, Beth?
Yep.
Okay. The next is the Structural Engineers, Greg Sellers' report for the structural engineering work to be done on the stage portion of the building. Read this over. I think this is very thorough. They are a very reputable engineering firm. I think they'll do us well. Talked to Phil.
You're familiar with them.
Yes. I talked with Phil today about the monies and he said we do have the money in our contingency fund. Is that right, Phil, the contingency fund?
Sorry.
What do we do, cut him out?
The nurse came to the room.
Oh.
There you go.
So anyway, I think I'm right on that. We do have the funds and I think this is a goal that. Phil, are you there?
Yeah, what's up?
Well, we're just talking about the Greg Sellers' report and what you told me today that the money is in the Board of Selectmen's contingency fund to pay for this.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's there.
Yeah.
Either in this year's budget or in last year's holdover. You've got plenty of money.
And this is, just for the viewer, this is to hire an engineer to figure out pretty much, sort of how badly the stage is listing away from the building. much, sort of, how badly the stage is listing away from the building.
If you read this report, they explain very specific, very specifically, if you read this report, exactly what they plan to do, they're gonna do some test boring, they're gonna dig some test holes, check out the foundation, monitor the tipping of the, of the stage, um, and give us a report.
It's the work that needs to be done before we can decide what the priorities for the building are.
Rather we need to do anything.
Right.
Rather it in fact is gonna go down, or it's stable.
Right.
So, um, this has been a long time coming, I think this is the, we're in the right step in the right direction to tackle this, to tackle this issue, so we know exactly where we are, what needs to be done.
And they've promised the delivery of the report by the end of April, so then we can make plans after that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I propose a motion to accept the bid from Sellers' tree ball structural engineers for $9,000.
Is it nine?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. All right, so motion's been made and...
Second.
Seconded, uh, to accept, uh, the report from Sellers, to have them proceed with his structural, and to, um, approve the $9,000 out of the, uh, our contingency fund.
You have a question, Ray?
It's approved by 2019.
Yes, yeah. And if you look in, in the report, there's some things that we may have to do to make that possible, to get the machinery and stuff in there. Yeah. Okay, too many distractions here with this phones.
John?
Yeah.
You with us? Do you hear that? That's $9,000 for the engineer, the structural engineer for the determination of the back of the building?
Well, I, I guess Phil's looked into it and approved it, I'll go along with that.
Okay.
All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Jill says aye.
Jill says aye.
Mary says aye.
Mary says aye. John says aye.
Sonya says aye.
And Butch says aye. All right. Okay, Beth, Beth?
Yep.
All right. I talked to John about the overweight truck permits that he...
Yes, I've been over them twice, and they all look in order, I make the motion, we approve them.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the overweight truck permits. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Jill says aye.
John says aye, Jill says aye.
Mary says aye.
Mary says aye.
Sonya says aye.
And Butch says aye. All right, now we have...
Liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses, and we have a whole, you have the originals?
I do, for you guys to sign.
And can we, we have to approve all of those, can we approve them as a lot, or do we have to do it individually?
You can as a lot, um, because I have them listed all out, and that's why I listed them out, because I'm a...
Has everybody read through them and know what we're...
And all of them are paid up, all their taxes are paid up.
So we get the Keedron Valley Inn, that's, that's one. The other one is, uh, Woodstock Hospitality, that's on the river. Woodstock Beverage, that's the Beer King on the other end of town. FH Gillingham's. South Woodstock Community Partners, that is...
That is the store?
The store, yeah.
Country store, yeah.
And the Worthy Kitchen. And the Cafe.
Mopair.
Yep.
And Keedron Valley Inn.
Keedron Valley Inn.
Maple Fields, Max, and Woodstock.
Maple Fields, yep. All right.
It is the season, I guess, huh?
Yep, I guess so.
And some of those include, um, catering permits. I move we approve the liquor licenses, renewals as submitted.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve them as submitted. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Jill says aye.
Aye.
John says aye, Jill says aye.
Mary says aye.
Mary says aye.
Sonya says aye.
And Butch says aye. All right. The next is the Board of Soccer Commissioners. So you saw in your, um, packet that they want to put an apartment up over the...
They have already put in the apartment, I do believe, they're just waiting for connection. Yeah, it's just an increase from one to two bedrooms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have to approve that?
Yes. We're approving the fact that they're going to, um, the allocation.
Yeah.
Yeah, the higher allocation, and that we have the capacity and approval, we're guaranteeing we have the capacity. Make a motion to approve the addition of two 80 gallons per day for a two-bedroom apartment at, um, 13 Elm Street on the second floor.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded to approve the 280, 280 gallon a day addition, uh, more gallons to the apartment proposed for Elm Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Jill says aye.
John says aye.
Mary says aye.
Jill says aye, Mary says aye.
Sonya says aye.
And Butch says aye. All right.
Okay.
So I don't know, we don't really have anything, uh, with the King Farm and the other business.
Oh, correct.
We don't have a dog in that, that's a federal, a federal issue.
Do you want to tell people watching at home what it is?
Don't know much about it, to be honest with you.
Oh, well, just that they're, it looks like they're planning to transfer the land, the sale of the King Farm over to the National Park Service, and they're working on that agreement and timing. Two Rivers Out of Beach is there, but they don't want to be there anymore, so there's just a bunch of moving parts, but it was more like they just got an FYI that this conversation is happening.
Thank you.
Question for other business. This is a last minute for other business, if you want to bring it up. The financial report.
Oh.
I got it at the end of hour.
Oh, just the summary of expenditures to date?
Yeah. And I have been, um, so on the line for revenue for, um, town clerk fees, it should be 54.09 percent, not 324.55 percent.
Thank you.
And also to explain the ambulance services being in the negative. We have received $122,563 in revenue, but we have drawbacks, meaning we won't receive the money due to Medicaid, Medicare, or people can't pay, of $123,537 and 10 cents. And, um, there has been stuff that's been billed out, but it hasn't been posted to the general ledger, so they can't, we can't see that money in this report as of right now.
So it looks worse than it really is?
It looks worse than it really is.
Right.
So, once that's marked, you should...
Thank you for that explanation.
Thanks.
No, really.
And then we have the letter from, um, the, uh, George for the EC Fiber.
Oh.
This letter of resignation.
A letter of resignation.
And I guess, I don't know, we need to approve it, but it probably...
We need to accept it.
Accept it, yeah.
I'd suggest they have the town manager run a little loan, thanking George for his service.
Yes, George Zdowski's been, um...
Very good, John.
EC Fiber rep for quite some time.
Okay.
And he's served as a good steward.
We have some appointments to make, but we aren't ready to do any interviews right yet.
Correct.
Okay, so, Beth, will you see that we get a letter off to him?
Yeah.
Thanking him for his years of service. Any citizens' comments? Any citizens?
We're all citizens, we're all citizens.
I'm good, I'm great.
Okay, I guess we need to adjourn.
Minutes.
And, oh, citizens' comments.
Well, were we gonna discuss who's talking about what?
Oh, yes.
When are we allowed to talk?
We have to review town meeting. Who's gonna present what information?
Are we allowed to do it?